I might get very angry. My name's Dawn Murphy, M U R P H Y. We have been sent a notice for our RV. My daughter's living on my lot, been sent a notice for it. You need to move that RV. She's got well, septic power. She's getting ready to build a house on another lot, no big deal. She'll take care of her business and move to our other lot, because she just got her building permit. Here's my problem. Building, I've heard of probably five to ten code compliances in a week. Of people complaining about RVs. Yet we have a homeless problem. Now, mind you, these RVs have well, septic's power. You go up to that homeless camp up there, and guess what? They're having fires. There's feces everywhere. There's garbage everywhere. I don't know if anybody has driven up there lately. But when I was robbed, I had the unfortunate joy of driving through the slum of Nevada. Yet I'm getting tagged for an RV when I pay taxes. I have a well, septic and power, and trash delivery, and a mailbox, and people that work, and people that clean, keep it cleaned up. So maybe when you're talking about your master plan community, maybe we need to start considering the tiny homes for little people, for other people, because this community deserves it. This has turned into a a horrible, horrible thing when you're dealing with Nye County Planning Department and the code enforcement. Nobody cares. Nobody has a, has a give a care. Well, Prump wasn't like that in the beginning. I've been here for thirty-three years. Or maybe it's thirty-four. I don't even know. I've been here a long time. I own businesses here. I have invested my family, my life, and everything in this community. Yet I get treated like I'm a second-class citizen because, oh, the, the, um, code enforcement has showed up. Nobody wants to help you. Nobody, they just say, do what we say. I didn't sign up for homeowners association. I make sure my houses aren't in homeowners associations. I make sure my property's not in a homeowners association. And I understand there's a certain degree, you gotta keep things cleaned up, but there's a point when this, when Nye County Planning and code enforcement has gone too far. When we have fire, just yesterday, a fire out at the Innisimpkins. Homeless people living out there. That's okay. But the commissioners, I heard wanted, I don't know if this is off the air, so it could be wrong, wanted to set up a homeless community right in front of the, in, great, never mind. Yeah, you guys don't give a crap anyway.
David Humes, H U M E S. Uh, first time I've been here. I don't know how the, what the protocol is or anything. And I don't know what's on your agenda. Uh, maybe you have it on the website. I need to check it next time before I come. The little mini town that you're gonna think about putting, is that on the agenda? Yeah, for the homeless? No, okay. That's what I wanted to mention. Oh, did we get rid of that? Well, there's, I heard it was like April. So they already talked about it. Uh, so are they gonna put that in there? Or no? I'm just wanting, all my comment was, if you're gonna, if, if, if we're getting federal money, right? No? I, I heard, I heard, I don't know, I could be wrong, whatever. I just heard that we got federal money. If they give us federal money to do something and we don't want it done, why don't we just refuse the money so we don't have strings? That's all I'm saying, you know? Keep, keep prump, prump. Okay? That's it. Who made that law? State Legislature. Do we have to obey by that? Aren't we our own sovereign county? Damn. Fast forward, bookmarking system. I'm forty-four. So in a nutshell, are they putting it in? If there was, I just wonder if we had a choice, like, can we put it like, you know, in Area fifty-one or something? I thought they were just like, I don't even know if they're houses, but they're little mini, it's like a campground or something for homeless, no? Thank you. Okay, thank you very much.
My name is Danny Murphy. M U R P H Y. I wanna know, are you gonna do anything about the, the homeless camps up there with the RVs dumping sewage on the ground? Are you guys gonna do anything about it?
Audio test, one, two, three.
We're good.
Okay, thank you.
Audio test, one, two, three. Audio test.
Hello, there you go.
All right, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. We'll reconvene the Prump Regional Planning Commission meeting, and we will pick up with Agenda item number three for possible action, annual election of officers of the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee, nomination and election of officers for the current year per Nye County Code, Nye County Resolution twenty seventeen dash oh-three. So three A, nomination and election of a chairman. Do we have a nomination? Let me ask a question first. Does it have to be someone different than currently of the RPC?
Madam Chair, it, so all the RPC members are also members of the CIP.
Correct.
So it has to be somebody that's a member of the RPC.
Let me specify more clearly.
Can it be the chairman of the RPC?
Yes, it could be.
Oh, okay.
I was just gonna say the same thing. I don't believe, and you can correct me if I'm wrong.
Sheriff, I'd like to make a motion.
There you go.
Like to, uh, make a motion to elect Beth Lee as the chairman of the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee.
A second.
That's fast. We have a motion in a second, uh, to nominate and elect, um, Beth Lee as the chair of the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee, so I will call for the vote, starting with Commissioner Blackstock.
Aye.
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 Epstein?
Aye.
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 Okay, so that passes six-zero, so we, I will take a nomination for the vice chair.
I'd like to nominate, um, John Koenig for vice chair of the Capital Improvements Committee.
I will second that.
Do we have a nomination for John Koenig as the vice chair? Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you very much. I'll call for the vote, starting with Commissioner Turner.
Aye.
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 Epstein.
Excuse me, Chair, I apologize. This was an action item, and so we should've had public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. I will open up public comment. If there's any member of the public that wishes to speak on this item, please state your name and spell your name for the last, spell your last name for the record. I'll get it right.
I have no comments on the phone.
Okay, having none on the phone and none in the chambers, then we will close public comment. And we will move on to item number four, for, uh, possible action, approval of the minutes for, from the April twelfth, twenty twenty-three Planning Commission meeting, regular meeting. Do we have any corrections or discussion for this item?
Madam Chair, I move to approve.
Um, before you make your motion, I did turn in, um, some minor corrections to staff.
I don't know.
So.
I still move to approve. With corrections.
With, we have a motion to approve with corrections. Uh, before I take the second, I'll open up public comment. If there's any member of the public that wishes to speak on this item, state your name, spell your last name for the record, please.
I have no comments on the phone.
Having none on the phone and none in the chambers, we'll close public comment, and I will entertain a second.
A second.
Thank you very much, and we'll call for the vote, starting with Commissioner Blackstock.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, item number five for possible action, approval of or modifications to the agenda. Approval of the agenda after considering request to rearrange, hold, or remove items. Staff, do we have any?
We have no changes.
Thank you very much. Then I will open up public comment. Any member of the public that wishes to speak, state your name, spell your last name for the record, please.
I have no comments on the phone.
Thank you. Having none on the phone and none in the chambers, we'll close public comment, and I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, motion to approve.
A second.
Fabulous, thank you. We have a motion in a second to approve the agenda as submitted and posted. I will call for the vote, starting with Commissioner Turner.
Aye.
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 All right, we have an agenda tonight, then, number six, correspondence and announcements, do we have any this evening? Okay, seeing none, then we will move on to item number seven, Commission Committee Director Reports, BOCC Liaison, Commissioner Carboni.
The only thing I have to bring to the table, is I'm tired of hearing all this about tiny homes, and us having a park for the unfortunate individuals, but there is an issue with the homeless out where the discussion had come from the public, we're waiting for information from the owners of those properties, so we can move forward, so, that's what we have to wait for.
Understood, thank you, Commissioner Carboni, we appreciate that, Director's Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, so, planning applications for April, total applications received, 188, and that's 68 less than last month, total applications processed, 115, which is 77 less than last month, since July 1st, there's been 1,624 planning applications received, and 291 new code compliance complaints received, that compares to 1,767 planning applications, and 314 code compliance complaints for the same time last year. Building permits for April, single-family residential, we had 20, which is 19 less than last month, multifamily, zero, which is one less than last month, commercial permits, 12, that's three less than last month, total permits issued, all categories, 152, that's 84 less than last month, total building inspections, 388, which is 86 less than last month. Code compliance for April, new complaints, 39, that's 10 more than last month, and code compliance cases closed, six, which is 17 less than last month. Update on previous items heard by the RPC, so, there was a waiver, 23-2, which was a request to waive the asphalt drive aisles, and a waiver to allow chain link fencing in lieu of a block wall, that was for a mini storage facility, Highway 160, that application was heard by the RPC on 315, and the application was denied, the applicant then filed an appeal to the BOCC, which was heard on the 418 agenda, it was continued to the 516 BOCC meeting, and the applicant has now withdrawn that waiver application, so that waiver is done. We had a zone, I'm sorry, a master plan amendment application to re, to change the master plan category from RDR to rural development area for 3620 West Bell Vista Avenue, that was the top-notch facility, the item was heard by the RPC and recommended for approval, and was heard by the BOCC on 418, and was approved, and there was also a corresponding zone change with that for top-notch, to rezone the property from neighborhood commercial to commercial manufacturing, and that was also recommended for approval by the RPC, and approved by the BOCC on 418. Zone change, 23-4, which was in Mountain Falls, that was to rezone from specific plan to neighborhood commercial, that was for a RV storage lot, and that was heard by the RPC on 412, and was recommended for approval, and was approved by the BOCC on 516. Text amendment for suburban estates residential, to remove subsistence farming and add farms for the raising, growing of tree and bush crops and/or field crops, that was heard by the RPC on 412, and was recommended for approval, and the bill was heard by the BOCC at their 416 meeting, and was adopted as written. Text amendment for light industrial to remove renewable energy generating facility as a permissive use, that bill was heard by the RPC on 412, and recommended for approval, and that bill will be on the 516 BOCC agenda, and that's to set, set the public hearing for either June 21st or, or June 27th, if the board changes their date for their meeting. And, and then text amendment for multi, multifamily residential to allow single-family detached dwelling units in the multifamily zone, that was heard by the RPC on 412, and recommended for approval to the board, and then that bill will be on the 516 BOCC agenda to set the public hearing for either June 21st or June 27th, so, and that concludes the report.
All right, thank you so much, and now we will convene as the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee, and we will go into item number eight, for possible action, discussion, direction regarding the Capital Improvements Plan, this is an update on the status of the Capital Improvements Plan.
So as you know, CA Group has been preparing the update for the Capital Improvement Plan, currently we're waiting on traffic counts to finish the report, we are collecting them very slowly, we had some counters break, and we're trying to purchase new ones, it's in finances queue for purchase, but right now, it's going pretty slow for those counts, other than that, that's all they're waiting on, that I'm aware of is counts.
Okay, how's everything else going, pretty good?
Haven't, haven't, I haven't personally seen it, I just know it's, that's all they're waiting on, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, that's, that's fine, is there any direction, or is this just a discussion item?
To be honest, I didn't know this was happening, so, I didn't know this was on the agenda, it wasn't mentioned last meeting, so.
Okay.
I got the agenda.
All right, well then, since this is a possible action item, I'll open up public comment, if there's any member of the public that wishes to comment, please state your name and spell your name for the record.
I have no comments on the phone.
Okay, well then, having none on the phone and none in the chambers, we'll close public comment, Mr. Osborne, is there any direction, or is this just a discussion item?
No, this is really just an update on the status, that was really what it was for.
Okay, then we don't need any direction from staff, then we will adjourn as the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee and reconvene. Ah, yes, sir.
Before you close.
Yes, sir.
How long have those items been on the agenda, on the capital improvement?
The?
Counters.
The counters, it's been 15 days since it's endocusign?
Just a small note, the reason why I'm bringing it up, is we're having problems with, with that funding, so, so just to let you know, I have no idea what we're gonna be doing, so, I'll be following those items, thanks.
All right.
Where, how much do those things cost?
Four, four counters costs a little over $5,000. It's, yeah.
You just don't have any capital, okay, just so everybody knows, you know, we're, we're at the point in time where capital has been shrinking for the last three years, and people understand.
Okay, well then, before we close this item, then, is there any other discussion or questions? Okay, having none, then we will close the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee, and we will reconvene as the Perump Regional Planning Commission, and we will go into our master plan workshop, item number nine, for possible action, public hearing discussion and deliberation to adopt, amend and adopt or reject the Perump Regional Planning Commission, resolution number 2023-14, a resolution adopting the 2023 update of the Perump Regional Planning District Master Plan, staff.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner, good evening, everyone, the document before you is the final draft, finally, of our master plan update. Included in your Becca is a copy of the resolution recommending adoption, there are updated maps and tables for the master plan chapters, and also provided are the track change copies of chapters one through seven that were reviewed during our previous RPC meetings. The document was also sent to Perump Tourism, to Perump Buildings and Grounds, Double M Construction, and Nye County School District Superintendent, I did receive comments back from Jimmy Martinez, the Town of Perump B&amp;G Facility Manager, and his only comment, he had a couple comments, it was to change the size of the community swimming pool to, it's not an Olympic-sized swimming pool, I learned something new today, an Olympic-sized pool is 164 feet by 82 feet, ours is only 87 feet by 47, so, you know, that's okay, right? When you're a little kid, it's a big pool, right, so, nobody cares, it's cool. The Blosser Park no longer has softball practice, because now it's a dog park, so okay, that's cool, sounds good to me. The land use map for chapter four was updated by our new GIS administrator, to show the corrections to the BLM disposal areas, and I found two maps that actually, they still showed like the 2022 date, so, that is something that we can modify, once we complete the formatting, there is a couple of spots where the title to something is up on another page, and Celeste is like amazing with Word, and it gave her nothing but fits last week, so, we decided to take a break, and we'll come back, before it goes to BOCC, we'll get it squared away. Let's see, and there was one page that was missing, it was the photo references, so, as you could tell, there were some photos that were in the, in the document, and that was one of the pages that didn't make it through one of my restarts, which was great. I'm available for any questions, comments, concerns, if there's any corrections or additions to be made, I will happily make them for you, and even bring them back to the June meeting, we are tentatively scheduled for this to be on the BOCC agenda for, it's the Perump June meeting, whatever, if it's the 21st to 27th, I'm not sure.
I believe it was moved to the 27th.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd just like to say something. First of all, I'd like to commend the author for an excellent job, a lot of reading, but it's excellent reading, good job, I have a couple of very minor corrections, where there's a word that shouldn't be there, I think it's twice, it doesn't affect anything in the document, and I left my note at home, so, I'll get, I'll get back to you on that anyways, but, this, this is an excellent document, so, I'd like to thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, I second that, because this is, it was a huge thing to tackle, it was a huge project to tackle, very well done, thank you, thank you for your effort.
I have a couple of comments or questions.
Ready?
First of all, yes, it's excellent job, you know, the only one I had, and this is, nothing wrong with this, is, you had Duckwater School in there, now they closed that, is that something we want to keep in there, or do we care? I mean, it just came up, so I don't.
Right.
I know, but it's in, in the document, so I'll just, so I'll just, I just caught that, and the same thing with Yucca Mountain, isn't that, isn't that dead in the water?
Hmm, not quite.
Not really?
Not quite, yeah, that's why.
I didn't know.
I referenced to go back to the website, there's, there's still stuff moving, but, yeah.
Okay, that, that's all I had, it just caught my eye, other than that, it's, it's, it's actually an easy read, I'm not a big reader, it's actually an easy read, so, it needs more pictures.
I think the size of it's just a little intimidating, Commissioner Carboni?
And when it comes to Yucca Mountain, there is activity going on back in Washington, DC, we actually have folks that have been out there a couple of times, and again, I'm not gonna say it's promising, the point is, is it still has conversation, so, if we take it out, and something does happen, I've just gotta put it back in, so, I mean, it's whatever you guys want to do.
Ms. Medici, every month we see this, every month I tell you, good job, yeah, this is, this is a much higher level of work than I expected, so I'm pleasantly surprised.
All right.
Just kudos on the, I really liked the map on page 107, the 2022 PR PD Master Plan Updated Perump Developed Parcels map, is that one that's available in like full size?
Yeah, we can probably do something like that.
That's a really cool one, especially in my world, but, just for people knowing, we're now more single-family residents than we are manufactured, that's a huge like gap that, that jumped, so, thank you.
Definitely, I will relay that to our GIS team, definitely, thank you.
The other thing is, by the way, that I had asked before, before the meeting, seems like you brought maps up, there's, you can make that map a little bit bigger by when it folds, and I've asked for that to go in the final, because these are really small. If you make them the next size up, and they fold into the whole thing, it's much better, so, and I got an agreement that that'll happen, so.
All right, well, this is a public, or a possible action item, so I will open up public comment, if there's anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this, please state your name and spell your name for the record.
I have no comments on the phone.
Having none on the phone and none in the chambers, then I will close public comment.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the master plan document for 2023.
We have a motion to recommend approval, do we have a second?
Second.
I apologize.
Oh, I'm kidding.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I apologize for interrupting Michelle Nelson for the record, could we amend that motion to say, adopt resolution number 2023-14?
I'll amend my motion to say that, if I had an agenda here, I would have got it right.
And I will amend my second.
Wonderful, so we have a motion and a second on the floor to recommend adoption of resolution number 2023-14 to the Board of County Commissioners, so I will call for the vote, starting with Commissioner Blackstock.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
All right, so that will go on to the Board of County Commissioners, very nice, wonderful. So just a quick question, then, so this is gonna go on to the Board of County Commissioners, if, once they adopt it, what are our next steps? We, we've talked about looking at SPD VR 20, do we have an idea of what we're gonna do after this is adopted?
Well, for, for one, definitely, we're gonna look at the VR 20 zoning that we've talked about in the past, Solon Avenue, and all the VR 20 that's way up, up north, where there's no utilities, I think that's our next step, is to tackle that.
Okay, then we will look for that to come forward in future months, thank you. And then, item number 10, future meetings and workshops, discussion and direction concerning items for future meetings or workshops, set date, location, and time, our next regular RPC meeting will be June 14th at 6:00 PM here in the chambers, unless otherwise noticed. Is there anything else? Discussion, direction to staff, workshop requests? All right, then, we'll close this item, and we will move on to our second public comment, no action will be taken on public comment until it's agendized as an action item, any member of the public that wishes to speak, you have three minutes, and please state your name and spell your name for the record.
I have no comments on the phone.
Thank you very much, having none on the phone and none in the chambers, we will close public comment, and thank you very much for your time, everyone, tonight, we are adjourned, and we'll see you next month.